So I'll just quickly go roll call for the board members. Cheryl Mimi.
Present.
Joe Litch.
Here.
Michelle Reese.
Present.
Meg Fielding.
Present.
Thank you so much. We have planning staff available for assistance tonight. Matt Ward, Senior Planner, myself, Randy Dees, the Planning Director, and then Lori Gable will be taking minutes for us as well. I'll turn the floor over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of the December meetings. If has anybody any corrections or additions to the minutes for December 15th, which is our main meeting on Tuesday night?
Madam Chair, I would like to approve the minutes for this for December 15th. And do we do 17th also any separate?
I thought.
Oh separately, okay, for December 15th.
Okay, recognized. Any, everybody who approves that, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any nays? Okay, the 15th is approved. And now for the minutes of December 17th. Do I hear a motion to have those approved?
Madam Chair, this is Michelle Reese. I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 17th.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any who don't approve, say nay. Then the minutes of December 17th are also approved. So we'll move on to new business. Ms. Brandy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn the floor over to Matt Ward, Senior Planner.
Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission Members. Thank you again for joining us and anybody, I guess, in the in the virtual wide world web, the public of Indian Trail, we thank you for joining us too. So tonight's meeting is about conditional rezoning. It's CZ 2020 0098. It's for Clover Group. And this applicant here, this is the first time they've come to Indian Trail. They are requesting approximately 6.04 acres from the SF1 conditional zoning to a multifamily development CZ MFR. And applicant again is Chris Clifton, Clover Group. And then 10 of this is to allow 122 senior living apartments to be constructed. As you can see here on the aerial map, these two reded or two red highlighted parcels along the South Line and Chestnut Lane. Those will be combined on the aerial map. You can see this a little bit better. The parcel sits really far off Chestnut Lane. This is Woodland Road down here off the picture. And then this would be Chestnut Lane up here. So the one existing home and some of the trees will be coming out to make way for this development.
Are you going to share your screen? I'm sorry.
You need to share your screen.
I'm looking through my paper. I'm like, okay, where is he?
Let's see if it lets me share it. Host is saying, okay, maybe Randy let me share it. Let's see.
Matt, give me just a second and I'll.
Okay, you're fine. I'll have to remember to ask you guys if you can see anything when I start. I apologize about that.
That's okay.
Okay. Something's going now, so that's good. Let me see if I can get, okay, can everybody see that screen?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Randy. Let me go back up and start over. So this is conditional zoning case 2020 0098. This is located along the South Line of Chestnut Lane, 135 Chestnut Lane. The request is rezone approximately 6.04 acres. And that's single family SF1 to the conditional zoning multifamily, which is MFR. Chris Clifton with Clover Group, this is their first time working Indian Trail. They are the applicant. Well, Chris is, he's on Zoom meeting tonight with Clover Group. And then 10 of this rezoning is to make sure they're allowed to build 122 senior living apartment unit. And the area of location, the 135 Chestnut Lane, you can see the existing home here. The two parcels you see shown highlighted in red, just off of Old Monroe Road. This is a better image. You can tell that the parcel goes back far, you know, kind of off, far off Chestnut Lane. Here's Old Monroe over here.
We're not seeing the picture, Matt. We're just seeing the request.
Oh, you're not seeing the picture?
There we go. That's better. Okay.
Okay. Can you see now, does it say existing site? And you see the yellow line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, maybe it's just the flow takes, I'll go slower on the slide, maybe. This was the previous one. Can you see this one now, the previous one that had the red highlighted, the parcels?
That's, you have to scroll up. There you go. Yes.
Okay, you can see that one. Okay. That was the one we were on. That's the current one we were on. Okay. So as we were saying, the home and some existing trees will be coming out. So let's see if we can get, these are some regular pictures. Is everyone seeing these? This is the, the site, this home will be removed. I was standing here on Chestnut Lane. You can see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. And this was on the joining land. I was standing in the neighbor's driveway, taking a picture to the east. Old Monroe would be out here. This is another map for you. The highlighted red parcels again, showing, those will be combined to make way for this. You know, existing zoning here is mainly the single family, the SF1 residential. Future land use does recommend for the area to be mixed use. If you see this red one here, if anyone can see my arrow. This is the red dash line. That's Harper's Run. It's 116 townhomes. It was recently approved. They're underway with construction. This is.
Not seeing any red arrows, Matt.
Okay, you're not seeing it. Can you see my, see cursors are moving?
We see the circle.
See a circle. Yeah, we see a circle.
Okay, okay. So that was the Harper's Run Town Homes. That was approved just kind of northwest of Clover, of what Clover, where Clover's proposing.
And how many units was that, Matt?
Harper's Run was 116 townhomes, 32-story townhomes. But will be 2-3, 116 townhomes. Okay, and on to the future zoning map here. All the red that you see is considered the mixed use and, you know, with the townhomes to the north, these being senior living apartments. We've got Dr. Presley's Animal Clinic. And then, of course, all their commercial retail kind of along Old Monroe and at the intersection of Indian Trail X Road. So we're helping to fulfill the plan that's being laid out here, or that have been laid out here for Old Monroe Village. Going on to further analysis of the property, again, we talked about the home is existing. That'll be taken away as well as some of the, the trees. It is to allow construction of 122 senior living apartment units. And future land use shows the mixed use district there, and they're proposing multifamily MFR, which that feels is in line with with what would be involved in a mixed use district. These are some of the the existing districts around, adjoining the property as we, as that was kind of discussed earlier. There's that one pocket of MFR, which is that Harper's Run. And then the two nearby sites, you might see this MBD that was for Dr. Presley's Animal Clinic. And then there's another MBD along Old Monroe Road that butts up to the back of this site. That's, that's vacant. It's MBD. So we're getting a, you know, a mix of different land uses in this immediate area, which is what we would want. It's close to an intersection. You're also close to Austin Village. Village plan as well. As you can see here on this, can you see the proposed concept plan? Does that show? Okay, great. So that's showing you the building layout. It's three stories. It's going to have 82 surface parking lot spaces and then 40 garage spaces. They're kind of distributed throughout the site. The garages are, that's one garage here, which I have eight flats there. And this one's another eight and eight, and then two more over here. So 40 garage doors, or 40 garage units to be laid out. And then 82 of these surface parking lot spaces. If everyone can see those, or see where my cursor is going.
So how much total parking is there, Matt?
122 spaces if you counted the garages.
Okay.
So it'd be 82 surface ones and then 40 garage for a total of 122.
Just about one per unit.
Correct. So let's go on here. This is also the thematic landscape plan that was shown, provided for us. And Mr. Clifton's group did a good job of laying out a 20-foot buffer around, you know, the, all four sides of of the development. You're going to have here a varied type and a good quality amount of landscaping to be planted on all four sides. It's got a berm four feet tall, and then they're going to have a six-foot black aluminum fence on top of that to help enhance the project views, you know, from the residential viewpoint, especially along Woodland Road, which would be, you can see these four homeowners that back up to this project. And we can see, this is Woodland Road down here. So the people, this is what they'll see from their backyard on Woodland Road. It's like the berm. Heavenly landscape with shrubs included between the trees and the aluminum fence. I'll go on to the architecturals. These show the north and south projections of the building. Basically, this is the northern projection along Chestnut Lane. As you can see, the stone Seth and I have not worked very hard to get to a, an amicable agreement here. It's facing, this north elevation is facing Chestnut Lane, which is kind of the shorter part of the building, and it's not the front of their building. But the stone comes up to the top of the first floor, and then there's other areas where the stone reaches to the top of the third floor on the balconies. And they threw in dormers up top here, the vertical hardy plank siding, and then the horizontal hardy plank siding makes up the majority of remaining of this elevation side. You flip down to the south side, which would be the Woodland Road, where the folks will be looking from their backyards. Again, it's that stone up to the top of the first floor, and then your dormers with the hardy plank siding, and then the vertical hardy plank siding on the balconies. Each balcony space is also, you know, going to have 68 on the bottom one, 68 square feet, and 72 square feet on the upper levels. The east-west, this would be Old Monroe Road. So we did get the stone up to the second level here, or the top of the second floor. And you also have like a pitch center area here. Can everyone see this image?
Flying the one. There's 122.
So this is a, a center pitched vocal point that says shingled, hardy siding. And then this will be the other elevations making up down through here, which again is that continuation of that stone around the entire base up to the first floor, and then your horizontal hardy and vertical party to make up the rest of it.
Excuse me, if you're not, if you're not doing the presentation, please mute your, your mic.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Additional features do include the window trimming and the shutters, some covered entranceways you'll see here and some on the back. And then if we go on to the garages, the elevation tiers of the stone on the side of the building, garages as, as well as windows on the door frontings, which is all stuff they've added for stash requests and talking with the neighbors. And then carriage kind of hardware features here for the doors. And you, can everyone see this picture for the, the front of the doors? We wanted to read the consistency statement unless anyone's got any, if they need me to go back over any of those slides of the concept and architecturals. Does everyone, does everyone feel comfortable they've got, they've gotten to see those slides at least?
Yes, thank you, Matt.
Okay, good. Okay. So going on with the consistency statements, this development is located within the Old Monroe Village. And it's a half mile from the intersection of Old Monroe and Waxall Indian Trail Roads. Development will help further strengthen and drive the mixed land use for development, for redevelopment in this area. Number two, the proposed plan for multifamily is consistent with the Old Monroe Village comprehensive future plan map. It is also consistent with the existing makeup of medium and high-density subdivisions by offering a diverse range of housing options as defined in Village Center overlay recommendations. And thirdly, it is consistent with the, the current townhome development under construction on the north side of Chestnut Lane, which helps create efficient and predictable land development that will encourage investment in the community. Going on to, we always have outside agencies, you know, provide feedback, and they will continue to provide feedback during this process. As we know, there's waters through there in that area and any of the onsite, you know, wastewater or well systems that were there before, those will be abandoned properly. And Fire, Marsh and Police look to this to make sure there's truck newerability and inadequate spacing. We did hold the two required community meetings on September 28th at Town Hall. We, it was a hybrid meeting, just like we've been having for community meetings. 10 people showed up on site at Town Hall. Questions were brought up about, you know, concerns about the view shed from their backyards and Woodland Road. About quality of landscaping and fencing, and then concerns about water runoff. And we go like the applicant and the neighbors, it was a really good community meeting. You know, all those concerns were valid. It was a good discussion, and I just feel like it was productive based on where we've got several iterations of the plans and the neighbors and working with staff and the applicant. I think we've got a product that we can be happy with. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and after this amendment with the conditions. And then it does promote the goals of the comprehensive plan through the land use and housing goals that we have set aside. So that's how we find it to be reasonable quest. And, you know, we do appreciate the applicant working with staff and adjoining neighbors on the revised concept plans. It's come a long way from the time we started back in August, so we appreciate that. This does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The board may have me, and should you have any questions, the applicant Chris Clifton is here on the Zoom meeting. And just to go over real quickly, these are the conditions that we have of it, for all of our proposed conditional rezoning. The first ones are the typical ones, talking about the review agencies on through the US Postal, down to you know, the details for this project that's tied to this project. And I do have one community meet, or like a public comment to read whenever, whenever everyone's ready for that. Okay, I think someone's asking a question. Let me see if I can.
I would like, before I ask my question, I would like to hear from the Madam Chair. I would like to hear from the builder. I guess Chris is doing a project, because I have questions about that.
Yes, I have some questions too. I think we should move on to the, to the developer.
Okay. Mr. Clifton, Chris, can you hear everyone?
I can.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. Appreciate, this is a privilege for us to be here. We want to tell you that your staff has done a great job, and we've enjoyed working with them. Let me introduce my team members. Matt Rowland, who's on the call. Matt's at Corporate in Buffalo, New York. We are a private company. All we do is senior housing. We are the developer, the owner and the operator. We own, operate and develop approximately 40 communities like this across the Midwest and have now branched out into the southeast and the southwest, including Texas. So you will be seeing us all the time because we own everything we develop. Let me first start by telling you that when I left grad school about 40 years ago, I started as a planning director. I thought all housing was senior housing. So times have quite changed since then. It is a pleasure for me to tell you a little bit about our community. If I can, let me get you to think about being a senior. I know you all are not as old as I am, but let me tell you what a senior goes through. Our profile of our resident is a 70-year-old female that is either widowed or has a trailing spouse that is either in memory care or in assisted living. They currently reside within five to 10 miles of this location, and they would prefer to stay in this location. They're looking for a safe environment that they can be close to their children, go to the same church, go to the same parish teater, food line, participate with their friends and family, and be in an environment where they can afford to be there somewhere between two and 10 years. Our average stay is about six years. There are several options that that young woman has to make. Either find a apartment in a market rate. They can go down the street about a mile, rent an apartment for about $1,500 or $1,600 a month, and then pay utilities, trash pickup, cable, internet and other services totaling to about $2,000. Or they can go to Matthews a couple of miles away, and they can put down $150,000 to $200,000 upfront, plus have the privilege of a rental of about $2,500 a month to be in a luxury two-bedroom apartment with a swimming pool, a chef on site, and all kinds of amenities. Or they could go to the beach or the mountains, but then they would leave the kids. So as your UDC code provides, this is a alternative to keep your seniors in your market. Let me say that again. This is an alternative housing choice to give your seniors an opportunity to stay in your market. These seniors are, have an income of about $75,000. They spend 13% more per capita on goods and services than a regular employed individual. They have no children that they send to school. They use less water. They use less wastewater. They don't travel at peak times. Only, our residents only have about less than one car per unit. Therefore, the parking provisions are empirical to our research. And the trip counts are always off-peak. Trip counts for our residents are about 10:00 or 10:30 in the morning and about 2:30 or 3:00 in the afternoon with a weekly peak of about Saturday at about 10:45 a.m. So here's the choice. Do they rent an apartment when their neighbors upstairs have two teenage children and their neighbors downstairs have two young babies? Or do they find an opportunity like ours to be with like-minded people of their age? And I think that's the, that's the housing choice that you're providing an opportunity for by looking at Clover. That's the niche, and that's the only niche that we provide housing for in, in our markets. What are we asking for? We're asking for permission to build 122 units. There is no phase two or phase three or phase four. When our demand is there, which if you drew a circle around the site, within 10 miles, there are 72,000 people, 65 years old and older. Within five miles of the site, there are 41,000 seniors, 65 and older. So we're asking you to provide an opportunity for us to, to develop this property, to provide this housing opportunity. What does the community get? Well, you get an opportunity to keep your seniors, which I think have tremendous value to the marketplace, not only because they spend money, but because they do offer value by being a part of a fabric of the community. We're low impact. We'll invest probably between 15 and 20 million dollars of assessed value. Our property taxes annually, which we will pay, will probably be about $400,000. And as you know, in North Carolina, about 50% of those taxes will go to schools, of which we will generate no demand for by 122 units being provided for housing. So $200,000 a year are going to go to schools, and we're not going to provide any demand for those kinds of services. So I think when you look at the alternative for other housing, I think we have a minimum impact and maximum opportunity for Union County. And I'll be happy to stop there. I'm not going to repeat, give you a 20-minute slide presentation on all the good things that we provide. Matt's got a list. We have amenities and services within the building. We have a high-security environment. Our seniors want safety, security and convenience, and that's traditionally what we, what we provide. They're going to do that at a rental of about $1,400 to $1,500 a month, and that includes their utilities, their cable, their cellphone, all of other services, including trash pickup and recycling at the facility. So I think you've got a high-value, low-impact development opportunity. And with that, I'll answer your questions.
Oh, I have a question. How do these people go food shopping? Do they, do you provide transportation with a van or something to take them to the food store? Do they drive themselves?
No, ma'am. This is a senior independent living facility. So you have, you have seniors that do drive. They are very mobile. They just travel when they want to, not when they have to. They're probably not working. They're not taking any kids to school. So they go grocery shopping when they want to, when it's convenient for them to do that. And, and of course, with COVID, I think we all know today, I don't know how you all are, but at my age, I don't even go to Walgreens anymore. I mean, not PillPack ships all my prescriptions to me every day, and I call up parish teater and tell them what I want, and they deliver it. I, I mean, we've got an environment today where, you know, getting out every day into traffic, especially between 6:00 and 8:00 in the morning or 3:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon for seniors is just not practical. So to answer your question, they're, they're going to participate in the goods and services around the area, but they just don't go very far.
Madam Chair, this is Michelle Reese, ma'am. I'm concerned about the parking because I think having the same number of parking spaces as you have units, I think your assumption that everyone, all the units are going to be one person with one car, I don't think is realistic.
Well, Madam Chair, we have empirical research that shows on all of our existing properties. And again, we're not talking about the last year or the last two years. We're talking about units that have been occupied since the late 90s. That a one-to-one parking ratio has worked very well for all of our units. And the worst thing we could do is provide a complex where people couldn't find a place to park. So it wouldn't be in our best interest to provide good parking. I think the second thing is if you look at the site plan, this is something that Brandy and I talked about when we first looked at the UDC code on providing parkage for regular market-rate apartments. I think your UDC call, code calls for between two and two and a half, depending upon the bedroom count. 90% of our units are two-bedroom, but we have a single unit person that's going to rent that. We know that. I mean, we know our properties. We know what our seniors have, and we have other property on-site there. If you can see from the site plan, there is other, other areas where you could add parking if we needed to. But I think we'd rather start with where we're at. I think we'd rather start with where we're at, knowing our empirical research shows that a one-to-one ratio fits, than putting asphalt down and creating more stormwater. More stormwater for for the rest of the.
Thank you. Sorry, Chris.
I was, I was going to add to Chris. This is Matt Rowland. I work with Chris on a.
I was, I was going to add to Chris, this is Matt Rowland, I work with Chris on our development team. We can provide you what we did, so of all of our properties. We surveyed sixteen total and we could provide a chart to Matt and Brandy and you as well. That shows that the parking space utilization on average across those sixteen properties. And most of our properties are the same, we vary a little bit between one nineteen to one twenty-five units. Is about eighty percent parking space utilization, so of those, for example, if we had. A hundred and twenty unit. Apartment complex, eighty percent of those would be utilized by cars.
So that means, what what is your occupancy then, is your occupancy eighty percent?
Our occupancy is generally higher, but we have a lot of residents who just either don't own a car. To answer your question about shuttles, once we get a series of properties in the same market, in other words, in Charlotte and Charlotte. Metropolitan area, we would provide a shuttle. As long as we get a critical mass in those areas and the shuttle takes those residents to and from wherever they need to go, basically, it takes a day and they they go, they zip around. But initially, we wouldn't have that shuttle, but what we've we've seen here is that. About eighty percent of our residents have cars in our parking lots. And some just carpool or like Chris noted, they get their groceries or their their prescriptions either through the mail or delivery services.
I guess it just is inconceivable to me that I would not be able to have a car to be able to get to the doctor or or do shopping. And of course, you're talking about seniors, they're going to have children and grandchildren come to visit, so where are they going to park?
Well, I mean typically our our seniors, if you look at our trip count, the the seniors come and go as they please because they don't want to have to battle traffic, so they go whenever it's convenient. So you know, if you look at a snapshot of the day. Not all of our spaces are full, even though our properties are generally have a little bit of vacancy, but you know, not eighty percent. So at any given time, cars are gone and when folks are visiting, we find that there's a lot of space to visit, I mean, I go to our properties all the time and I typically see at least like ten to. Fifteen spaces that are available if I'm going during the day.
Well, I guess to help with me, would it be possible just to have visitors, even if it's just like five or six extra slots, like. Towards the front of the bill, you know, towards the front on the side, would would you be possible to create a visitor spot?
We can mark off some spaces, I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, we can mark off some spaces that are right by the front door as visitor if you if you please. Correct.
I mean, to me, I'll be, I mean, I definitely agree with you, I don't, you know, I don't know, I'm I'm from the north originally, so we provide a lot more services. But I know that. Seniors, they don't, you know, it's not, it's different, I mean, not saying that they can't, but I'm just saying, like, I just think that. Realistically, it might not be as much act activity, I kind of want a senior living apartment in an area I think is good for the community. My question is, what kind of, I have a few questions, I'll, let me start with the most pressing one. You say those are three levels, three levels, will you provide, like, how, you know, I'm just thinking if I had like a. You know, knee surgery or hip surgery, I'm not going to get up to no three flights of stairs.
There's a central elevator core. In the in the central part of the building, the building faces east, so that's an interior courtyard. And there's an adequate high capacity elevator. That's really the only functional element that would be important for seniors, so you're exactly right, if we didn't have an elevator. Nobody's going to walk up and downstairs, so yes ma'am, we do have a central elevator core in the middle of the building.
Okay. I, what kind of amenities do you have, will you have for the community?
Matt, do you want to pull up that list or do you want me to rattle them off?
Um, either one.
Oh, I didn't mean you, Matt Rowland, I'm sorry, I'm talking.
Sorry.
If you look at page thirty of our packet, the list of amenities.
It is, it's on page.
Thirty.
Yep.
All right.
I I mean, I can tell you that it's it's not. It's not the country club, it's it's not the country club Cheryl that that we would all kind of like to retire into. But what we find is our 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 tenants tell us that the most important thing is safety. Common area space so they can have parties and decorate and do things seasonally. Have card games, do their church functions when they can't go to church, those are all the kind of events that we do, we do have an exercise facility. So there is some PT opportunities there onsite, I mean, it's as convenient as can without stacking up all these additional costs. That drive a majority of. Of those with the seventy-five thousand dollar income are higher, which is higher than your per capita income for all of Indian Trail. So it's not like it's quote unquote, low income housing, it just is affordable, it's an affordable alternative that you don't get. When you go to a standard market rate apartment.
Anything else, Cheryl? Yeah, I was just wanting to know what's the, what is the price, I didn't, I never got the price, maybe I missed, because I was trying to get out from the. My internet was going out, what's the, what's the unit price?
Sure, we haven't set the rents because we're looking at eighteen months out from construction, which probably won't start until the fall of this year. But I think I think it's, they'll probably, Cheryl, they'll probably be about, I'll say fourteen fifty, fourteen seventy-five. And again, remember that includes your power. Security, your internet, your cable, your trash pickup, that's everything, you rent one check every month.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair. I think Michelle Reese is attempting to ask a question, but your mic is real low, Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle, you gotta talk up.
Thank you, Joe, I hope everybody can hear me, I'm just curious. What kind of contractual obligations? And you know, maybe this would be a question better suited for the town and you might want to send it privately to the board. What kind of requirements are there for a senior facility versus just a regular hundred and twenty-two unit apartment building, number one? Number two. Which I started with, what kind of contractual obligations come with a senior facility like this? And I hope y'all heard that, I'll go back to me.
You want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Sure. First off, let's talk about the lease, everybody who lives on property has to sign the lease. And because it's a conditional age restricted property, you have to meet the age requirements by law and by our lease. So the contractual obligations are, you have to have a certain income level because we do credit checks and all those things. And then only the people who sign the lease can live there and you have to be fifty-five or older to live on property. So the question comes up from time to time, well, what if my grandkids want to live there? Or what if I'm a custodial parent for someone that's eighteen years old or sixteen years old or twelve years old? You can't live there. And that does meet HUD requirements. So it is a fully age restricted property from day one. And that's all we do.
Okay, so you've answered all my questions actually with the exception of. Do you have a property near? I know this is your first here in. Indian Trail, but in any of the surrounding area like Charlotte maybe?
We have one other property in Charlotte off of Steel Creek, south of the airport, that's in the same position that this property is. Seeking entitlement and will probably be constructed about the same time, it's a hundred and nineteen units. Configuration pretty much the same, you can go to the Charlotte City website under RZP twenty twenty dash oh thirty-eight. And there's a site plan and architectural renderings, it's a ten acre site versus this one at six acres and that's probably about the only difference.
So these are the only two here in North Carolina that you have?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, go ahead, Chris, sorry.
Now, I was gonna say, probably the closest ones here are going to be Louisville, Kentucky. Or Nashville, which is will soon be under construction this fall. Most of our properties are from Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Western New York. In that general area.
I I was going to add too, if you're interested, if you're, if you were interested in. If your question was about to go to see a property, unfortunately, we don't have any in the Charlotte market today. But if you go to our website, we do have some virtual tours about the interior of apartments, community room, lobby, that kind of thing. If you want to go there. I don't know if that, that's what you were referring to.
Yes, and so so mainly your properties are up north, it sounds like.
We we started our, our, we're headquartered in Western New York and Buffalo area and we have a number of properties there and then we've got, we've we've kind of made our way. Through Pennsylvania, Ohio and are slowly working our way south towards. And and excited to be in the Charlotte market.
So I imagine there's an abundance amount of public transportation available, which I think that's probably one of Meg's concern is here is a little different. Folks likes to own cars and go places.
Yeah, generally speaking, we're in suburban areas. Not quite on the beaten path, but not quite off the beaten path, frontage is not really a huge issue for us because a lot of our residents come from that three mile area. They're, you know, like Chris noted, seventy plus year old female, don't want to maintain their home, don't want to worry about the roof, don't want to worry about mowing the lawn. So they come from the neighborhood and they're very familiar with it. But frontage isn't a huge issue for us because it's not really a draw for us to, you know, have a giant banner and market our property that way. Because a lot of our residents stay with us for several years, it's something we take pride in. So they know, they know they're around. And they're generally in suburban markets off a beaten path, not on a main drag.
You'd be surprised, let's make a side note, just don't underestimate the north now, there's a lot of places that aren't similar to down here with lack of transportation.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm from New Jersey, so unless you're in the main part of of New Jersey, if you like on the west side or. Southern end, it's going to be just like here, it's not going to have the same amount of transportation, I've seen senior living. Development, I'm not particularly your your. Company and is usually, I think that's how the parking tend to be because there's not a lot of activity. So is, but you'd be surprised that just because it's in the north or whatever, it's it's not, they're not talking about New York City. They're talking about like Buffalo, that's like out there.
Yeah, and we're pretty auto centric as well.
I have a question about bringing up transportation. Are you guys doing anything as far as putting sidewalks up or? Obviously you are, okay, and then my other, my other is Monroe Road. And Chestnut.
Ma'am.
My next question.
I'm sorry, but. Public comment was limited to written public comments due to the virtual meeting. And state law requirements, so if you have questions or comments, please send those in writing to staff and we will read those aloud to the board.
Okay, can I hear what Chris had to say about the sidewalks?
Sure.
Thank you, let me, let me address both the transportation and the sidewalks. As the town UDC code requires, we're going to build the sidewalk. From the west side of our property to the east side along Chestnut in the front. It won't connect anything yet because the property on Old Monroe hasn't been developed, will probably be developed for commercial. It'll eventually connect in and of course Dr. Presley to the west already has his sidewalk in. But we won't go completely there until, because there's a lot between us and Dr. Presley, so we'll have all that put in. Also, we we chose to go to NCDOT with a right in, right out and a median strip. Which is the highest safety value for our residents, it's going to cost us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we requested that, we will be building that, so. Our residents will be protected, you'll still be able to get fire life safety in and out because it is a mountable median, but it's the highest and safest environment for. For seniors and if you know seniors, we'll we'll make five right hand turns and go ten miles all the way to go somewhere before we go to a traffic light. So even though at some point in time Chestnut will probably be expanded and hopefully. Old Monroe Road as well, those will be added improvements, but they'll match up with our right in, right out very well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I will say that I'm concerned about the the traffic on Chestnut and going into Old Monroe. I mean, you say three o'clock, at three o'clock, there is such a line on on Chestnut coming down with people trying to get onto Old Monroe. And a way, a line of cars on Old Monroe, it's literally. Deadlocked, I mean, you just, you can't, you can't get on it, you can't get off of it, so. Considering that there's already a hundred and sixteen units across the street. Adding a hundred and twenty-two here, I'm just concerned about what the traffic situation is going to be until Old Monroe is widened and Chestnut is developed.
Well, I I'll, again, I'll go back to my original comments and say that if you had a by right. Townhome development or a by right apartment complex that was market rate on this property, you're going to be generating traffic that will. Come to Chestnut and Old Monroe at peak. But my opinion on seniors is we will avoid. Traffic and change when we go to the doctor, when we go to food line and when we go see the kids. At our own leisure without getting into that traffic, I've sat out at that property from six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. So and I raised my kids in Matthew Stallins in the nineties, so I understand the traffic and I think you're exactly right. But if you're looking at the trade off between leaving all the sheep and the cows out there in the site and not having any traffic. I wish I could promise you we could do that, but we can't. So if you're going to have impact, let's have the lowest amount of impact you can, and I can tell you that our seniors not only not having. But one car or less are are going to go find the path of least resistance and travel when they want to because they can.
Okay. Brandy, was there any public comments that you needed to to read to us? I mean, other than just the the comments from the community meeting that was in our packet?
I believe Matt has one comment, we did receive some emails with more of a conversation with questions. But as far as. Official, you know, public comment, there was only one.
Okay.
I can read that, ma'am chair. From Corey Neer. She said, she, this email came in Friday afternoon, we have lived in Brookhaven for just a little over four years now. And increased traffic and the speed of this traffic on Chestnut Lane has been dramatic. The little country lane now appears more like a speedway. When I drive at the posted speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour, I'm tail gated, honked at and even passed. On Sunday evenings, it's not uncommon to hear motorcycles and cars. To race along the stretch from Anzell Drive to Potter's Road. We hear the vehicle stop, rev their engines and then race off tire swelling. Delivery vans, large trucks with dirt, rocks, et cetera, speeding down the hill and around the corners in the wrong lanes. This is, or there there is rarely any law enforcement of the speed limit on this road and it seems that drivers know it. The new constructions already occurred as the traffic circle at Chestnut and Weddington, the larger apartment complex at Chestnut and Weddington. And to date, all the increased traffic we have seen from that development is the construction traffic, not the residential traffic. And now the senior and senior living or housing at Chestnut and Potter's Road has increased the. On what this section of road can safely handle. Turning left from Anzell onto Chestnut is a short sided turn. And with cars typically driving five to ten miles over the speed limit, is it a danger, it is a dangerous turn. And yet there is another planned senior housing community just west of Brookhaven. Add this to the five hundred units have already under construction and planned stretch for that stretch of the Chestnut Lane between Potter's Road and Monroe Road. How is this two lane road supposed to handle disaster, extra traffic safely? And the last part here, I urge you to stop. The feasibility of these large number of new housing units along Chestnut Lane, currently Chestnut Lane is barely able to handle the existing traffic. It's too narrow and winding and widening, it would take years to get approved and completed. What happens in the meantime? And step back and think about the negative impacts that such a lot of dense development will have on this lovely little country road, Chestnut Lane. And the residents who live along and you're at many of them for years. Well, high density developments will bring a minimum of five hundred new cars to the small road and forever change the flavor of this very special area of Indian Trail. And that's, that was.
Okay, so the board is aware, I did respond to Ms. Neer, gave her some resources for the speeding and and other issues that she spoke of. Just there's the board is aware. I did respond to Ms. Neer, gave her some resources for the speeding and other issues that she spoke of in, in her first paragraph to us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I guess the other question is, I'm, I'm certainly going to be going to your website to, to look at some of your existing developments. Is there a spot on your website for reviews? I remember when I lived in an apartment before I bought my house here, when I moved down from, from New York, one of the things I looked at were the reviews of the various apartment complexes, and that helped me decide which one I wanted to go to. Do, is there a review section on your website?
No, ma'am. We, we kind of use our occupancy rate and our turnover as being our, our subject matter experts. And because our occupancy rate is so high and our turnover is so low, and we communicate with our, with our residents because our residents become our family. I, you know, we just have it. Now, I'm assuming that probably in various markets, Matt may be able to address this, but we have Yelp reviews because I think you can go on Yelp and offer a review for apartment or a restaurant or whatever. So I'm sure that there's a sophisticated, technical way to check those things out. But short of talking to all of our property managers on a regular basis, we're, we're pretty comfortable that we're serving the needs. Otherwise, we wouldn't be as successful as we have been.
I was gonna add to that. I can, I can pull up a couple. I mean, we've got, so our, our website, Madam Chairman, is Clover Group Inc. That's all one word, so C-L-O-V-E-R-G-R-O-U-P-I-N-C dot com, Clover Group Inc. And I'll send to Chris, looking forward to Brandy and Matt, a couple of the links from our properties that have Google reviews. Typically, you know, most things in, in this world have Google reviews, so I can send you those. I mean, as Chris noted, we take pride in, in, in running good operations. We've, we've been successful in this business, have about 40 throughout the nation and are, have plans to grow. And, and grow, have been growing as well despite COVID, like I would. But I can send you a couple of links to Google reviews for some, some of our properties that you could take a look at.
Thanks. I'd appreciate it.
I'd like to say, Chris, I think this is, from what I've heard, I think you guys are doing a great thing. I have to, I take care of my mom. She's gonna be 80 this year. We just happened to be able to put an apartment on my house for her. So, you know, she has a perfect situation, but a lot of people aren't in that same situation. It sounds like you guys have really gotten it together. And I, I'm way happy that there's a senior living coming here instead of, you know, just anybody allowed. So I'm very comfortable with that. Again, my own, my main concern is with the traffic and the safety of the residents currently. And even the seniors coming in and anyone visiting them, it's, it's very dangerous over by Monroe Road. And I think that sidewalks, you know, especially since maybe they don't all have cars, they could walk to Harris Teeter or to Walgreens if they wanted to. I just feel like that's something that's essential, especially since you're gonna be paying so much in taxes. And there's $200,000 floating around because you're paying half to the school, which is great, that something needs to be done with the roads.
Okay, well, that's, that's something that unfortunately, North Carolina DOT has to do. That's nothing that we can do. Are there any other comments from board members?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm fine right now.
Okay. Michelle?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm good and I'm ready to make a motion once everybody's comfortable.
Well, we will make our motions at our Thursday meeting.
Yeah, we'll do it Thursday, so.
Remember, two-part meeting situation with the...
Let me make one final comment and I'll, I'll let you all proceed. I want to thank the Woodland Road residents and the residents on the west. You know, there's four estate homes that have bud up against our property. And we've tried to go out of our way to make sure that they not only know that we're gonna develop a good product, but that we're gonna be here as long-term neighbors. So I think we've developed a kinship by, by the meetings that the staff has put together. And we look forward to implementing and doing exactly what we've said and promised we're gonna do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, if there's no other business, I will entertain a motion to...
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I have the floor for just a moment?
Of course.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to explain for those on the line who haven't been a part of the virtual public meetings. The state of North Carolina did pass special legislation for virtual public meetings. It does require that following the hearing of an item, the board cannot vote until 24 hours after that. This means that we hold a special meeting on the Thursday following. So not tomorrow, but the next day on Thursday, at the same time, 6:00 PM, the board members will entertain a motion and vote on this item. Staff will receive public comments. So you're encouraged to submit your public comments via email. You can submit them to Matt Ward. That's M-B-W@indiantrail.org. You can find the staff contacts on our website at www.indientrail.org as well, if I'm not coming across clear enough to you tonight. And we just, we just want to make sure that the members of the public understand the process. We want your feedback and your comments, but unfortunately, in the virtual world, it is, it does have to be a little bit limited. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else, Brandy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shannon, this is Michelle Reese and I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, the motion carries. See y'all on Thursday.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you.